Good morning. It's 8:30, and I'm going to call the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for September 3rd, 2024 to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have motion second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. And we have an employee recognition this morning.
Thank you. Unfortunately, something came up last minute for Maureen, so she's not able to be here today, but Maureen has been with us for 20 years. She's spent the majority of her time with the sheriff's office in warrants and transports, so she travels across the state and even sometimes across the country to pick up folks that need to come back to our facility. Soon she will be, and I got to be careful how I word this, she will be the person with the most amount of experience in that division with the upcoming retirement of Janelle Roganbach. So, we really appreciate Maureen and her knowledge and her dedication that she has to the sheriff's office and into the warrants and transports division.
Thank you, Sheriff. And thank you to Maureen. Next on the agenda, we have citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens here that want to speak to any issue that's not on today's agenda? Steve, anybody online?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Alrighty. Next, approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second the motion.
Have motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we have approval minutes from August 20th, 2024, August 27th, 2024, and the work group session minutes from August 13th, 2024.
Move approval.
Have motion second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, next we have... Let me get caught up here. Quinn Jaeger and Jessica Mickelson, approval to replace one full-time employee social worker position with backfill if needed. Quinn, Jessica.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. We are here, like you said, to request the approval of one full-time social work position in our adult intake unit. We are in the unfortunate position of having to replace somebody who's had 31 years of experience in this position, so it's pretty neat, but also very demanding. This is our adult intake. We do have 1.5 FTE in this position right now. This is the one full-time person in this role. Again, we talked a lot at pick committee about her institutional knowledge that she has and how difficult it's going to be to replace. We are looking at four weeks of overlap, so we, upon approval of this motion, we would immediately start the posting. We're hopeful that there'll be some internal interest with this as well, so I would request that backfill be completed. There will be a slight cost, a slight impact, as this person would start in 2024, so it'd be $8,079, an increase to the 2024 budget. However, I did go back and look at how we're sitting in terms of vacancies that we've had, and we would more than have enough, or more than enough underspending in our salaries for 2024 to cover this $8,079 difference for 2024's budget. We did include the wage calculator for 2024 and 2025 for your review. If there's any questions, I would gladly take those.
Questions?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the request with a backfill as necessary.
Second.
Have motion second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Very good. Good luck on the search. This can be a difficult spot to replace.
Yes, very much so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Corey Bing, solid waste manager, solid waste budget presentation.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning.
Commissioners, thank you. I'm here to present the budget for the 2025, or proposed budget for 2025. I'll just go from the top to bottom, point out some highlighted changes, some big percentage changes, and explain why. The very first line on page 62 is the special assessment. After a couple meetings, we've decided that we need to raise our special assessment from, or by $5, from 45 to 50. What this does is it covers the cost of equipment, all of our capital needs, and we were falling behind. As you know, the compactor went from $600,000 to 1.2 million, so we don't want to be in a bind in a couple years down the road. So, we are requesting to add that $5 to the per parcel fee. A little farther down, you'll see there's an interfund transfer that we removed. All that did was take money from the capital side, or from the operating side to the capital side, so we just elected to take that out rather than juggling money back and forth just to have a true budget. A little further down, printing and publishing, I removed that out of the solid waste management budget, and we moved it into the RRC. We're just trying to combine everything into one budget item or one category there, so... Same on the following page. We had a couple items that were 100% decrease. We moved those to the resource recovery center budget also, just to combine it to make it a little easier. And the last one on that page is that $200,000. They offset the first one, so... Composting budget did not change. Recycling, we took out the part-time salary there, and we put it into the RRC budget. We're using the same people in all those positions, so we just put them all into the one. Same with equipment repair and maintenance and office supplies. We moved all that to the RRC budget, and I removed the miscellaneous item on the very bottom, as we don't use miscellaneous very often. On page 66, in the household hazardous waste budget, we removed the part-time salary there, also moved that to the RRC as we share the same people, so we put it in one category. We took the telephone and postage out completely because that goes to the RRC, and we did have an increase in our other professional services there, just due to the fact that our haulers that pick up our material have raised their rates, so we have to have something to cover that, so... That's where that increase comes from. On page 67, cleaning supplies, moved that to the RRC, and small tools and supplies, I raised that a little bit just because we have some small needs, but it's only $1,000. It's 100% increase, but it's only a $1,000 increase, so cost of everything's going up. On page 68, the existing landfill budget. We are proposing landfill fees will go from $53 a ton to $56 a ton. This again is to uncover the cost of increased expenses. It's a $3 increase, so it's pretty minimal, but it should help us cover all of our operating expenses. We also raised the hay rant. We rebid that this spring, and it went from $500 a year to roughly $2,000 or a little more, so we'll get a little bit more income there. Removed the printing and publishing went up a little $500, just to cover cost of increase, or cost increases. Other professional services, I dropped that to, or dropped that to 200,000 from 300,000. If you remember, last year I dropped it from 500 to 300. We don't have any major projects, and it seems like that wasn't overkill, so we are trying to find a true number for that amount, or for that category. Conference registration, I removed that, as we don't have any landfill manager, all three more going to any conferences or anything like that, so that reduced it by 1,500. Page 69, there was no changes, no major changes. On 70, equipment over $500, we're having some pump issues, so I bumped that up to $10,000. The pump itself is about 2,500, so if I have to replace one pump, and we have three or four of them, the $2,500 we had in the budget would be gone right away.
I don't think we got that page.
We don't have that page.
Corey, is this under existing landfill?
Yes.
So, it should be in the back.
Page 70?
For us, I think it's page 67.
Oh, okay.
Got it.
Find it. Okay, so we went, it was equipment over $500, so we went from 2,500 to 10,000, as I was saying. Those pumps alone would eat up the $2,500 budget. If you see the very bottom line there, the closure, or not, of that section above the resource recovery, it says closure and post-closure costs, it's $270,000. We moved that to the capital side of the budget, and that'll come out of our per parcel fee. That number is a variable that goes, could go anywhere from a negative number, as you see, to a very positive number of 400, 500,000. So, that $270,000 is a benchmark, and we leave that in there to kind of cover us both ways. Down in the resource recovery portion, salaries other, we added $32,180. That's to cover Joe's maintenance and janitorial staff. We didn't have those in previous budgets, but it was only fair to pay for his people when they're cleaning and maintaining our building. Building repair and maintenance, bumped that up from 5,000 to 10,000, just because our stuff is off warranty now, or the majority of it, and $10,000 will cover the costs, we're hoping, so everything has gone up a little bit, but... And that is all, unless you have questions.
Questions for Corey. Thank you. Appreciate it, Corey.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our county administrator, our current county administrator, Stephen Larson, and Lori Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, we're a little ahead of time, so I'm anticipating Lori's on her way here, but we can certainly start here, and she can jump in as we go.
We're like a half hour early, though.
Well, do you...
I could do our other ones.
I just mean for the sake of Lori, I don't think that's fair.
We could do committee reports, or you've got some other things here?
I have two other items, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Change order and pre-design contract. I could jump and do those, and then we could do, we could do committee assignments, committee updates if we're still moving ahead of schedule. The first item, I guess, is item number five, and it's request to change order number three for Department of Motor Vehicle project. If you take a look on the back side of your document, there are five different items that are there. PR4, which is a card reader from a door standpoint, adjustment of $1,748.75. Roof cap metal color upgrade, as we've got to the project, to the end of the project, there's an area from a cap standpoint that we felt looked better with $786. Waiting ceiling perimeter trim was not part of the original plan, but requesting to move forward to $11,597.50 adjustment. Spray foam insulation, as we got to the ceiling, there was different spots behind the beams that we weren't able to get, get the insulation in, so we had to spray foam that, and that was $5,775. And then, as they worked through the ceiling of the trim, we also had some adjustments to the ductwork that had to be made, $2,457. For a total of $22,361.25, the additional CM fee with a $23,591.12. Again, as we've talked about, we've been done very well from a contingency standpoint. The original contingency on this project was $206,170. If approved, this would leave a remaining contingency of $183,253.25. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
Questions for Steve. Commissioner Kravenoff.
Give me an idea on that remaining contingency. What type of things might be that would get to that bigger figure of the 183?
Well, we're hoping, we're hoping nothing.
I mean, what kind of things are possible? I'm just curious.
I mean, I think you're just, you just have any minor changes that we would need to make adjustments on. From the DMV standpoint, I think we're in a pretty solid position, so I mean, I don't think we're anticipating any significant changes to that.
But too, though, didn't we talk about internally the approach? And that's something that will be included in that...
Yes, there's an approach to the farmer's field, to the west, there'll be additional change there, but that, I mean, that won't, from a 183,000 standpoint, that will, but that is an adjustment that would be coming.
Was, I think, the cost on that was 6,000?
I think it was right around there, yeah.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay, thank you. Lori's with us. Do we want to jump in?
Do we need...
Mr. Chair, could we, could we get a motion to approve that change order?
Sorry about that.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion to approve change order number three in the amount of
Have motion second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
Lori, do you want to pop up? Thank you, Mr. Chair, again. Just a budget discussion, in the last week, the board has been working on approving the market study, and so with that, we gave, the last board presentation that we had, had a net levy request increase of 8.375. With the market study implementations of various steps that we had, we are now sitting at 10.23% increase, understanding that that's not an acceptable level. Ms. Johnson and I have had multiple meetings over the last week, and have some things for this board to consider to move forward. Before we do that, I would just note that this board, this budget already does include a 3% COLA. It includes a 9% insurance increase, which is 4.5% of that is the counties. We have step increases, new requests. We have $250,000 for future insurance, and again, the market study implementation is also included in this to get to that 10.23%. Over the last week, we've looked through several different areas for budget mitigations. We looked for, again, the review of department budgets, the utilization of county fund balances. We looked at the review of utilization of additional funds, whether that's the public safety dollars that you've already approved, or consideration the use of ARPA, which will be discussed in an upcoming meeting, and then also internal and external budget requests. So, the use of county fund balance, I think, I know that this board takes two things very seriously. Number one, having a healthy fund balance that meets the auditor's standpoint, but also you firmly believe that in the event that you've asked for tax levy dollars from citizens, that in the event that we have revenues over expenditures, that that be looked to utilize for future budgets. And so, today, today, as Lori and I sat down and looked at our budgets, we did, I did provide you an updated fund balance comparison document, again, within your packet. Just of note, that, again, this is a, hasn't been, the audit hasn't been completed, it's an estimate at this point, but we did see some adjustments in the general fund, and Ms. Johnson also put together, on the second document here, provided additional information of how or why some of those fund balances have adjusted in a positive, positive way. And so, if you take a peek from the general fund, the estimated amount at the end of 2023 was $14,324,535, or an adjustment of $5,50488. Again, if you recall, last year we had a significant market value adjustment of roughly $4 million. We were fortunate to have an adjustment back of about 1.7 million, so that was a positive thing. We also saw increased interest than what we were anticipating with, from our budget. There are also several different one-time items, the criminal justice aid positions that were left open that caused additional revenues over expenditures. We also had the corrections of the jail, also had some job openings, but also, if you recall, we helped out Otter Tail County when they had some different issues, and so we had, when their jail was not able to be used, so we had some additional revenue that we had there. So, again, the recommendation then after our discussion was to utilize $1 million from the general fund, half a million dollars from public health, and also $350,000 from social services.
Can you just say that again, please?
$1 million from the general fund, $500,000 from public health, and $350,000 from social One of the things that we wanted, just a reminder for the board, that you've already appropriated some of these funds for different things. One, you have $500,000 that you set aside for this 2024 budget. You have another $500,000 that you set aside to complete the withdrawal management detox project. We've utilized $276,000 for the Holly Highway shop, and also $194,534 for the home that we purchased on the Northwest campus. And so, again, of the fund balances, already appropriated that don't show on the 2023 document, are $1,425,534. So, just to take that into consideration as far as, as far as where we are from a levy standpoint, or excuse me, fund balance on each of those areas. With the adjustment, again, I would say, also say that $1.835 million in recommendation would be the largest fund balance that this board has utilized, and that would get the levy proposed down to 5.87%. Just of note, in 2020, when we did the last market study, 5.85 was the net levy amount that was settled on. Having said that, we continue to look at different alternatives to lower that. Again, this board has taken action on the public safety funding already, utilizing $32,487 of the remaining funds to offset the sheriff's department budget for this year. The ARPA committee is scheduled to meet on September 9th. We have at least $144,743 remaining there, and looking to find ways to utilize that within the budget to offset levy. New requests, you also have a form within your, in your packet of the new requests. As you've had presentations from the different departments, those have been brought forward as part of their presentations, and looking at that, we have a couple different recommendations for this board to consider. The assessor's office asked, in their budget, has a $45,000 line item for aerial pictometry. This pictometry is different than the other pictures that we've taken throughout the county. This will allow, this will allow the auditor's office, by statute, every three years, that if they can't get on a property, they can do, the aerial pictures are so sharp and within, within the appropriate ability to have, to utilize them for the assessor's work. And so, we have riparian aid that we receive funding for from the legislature each year. We continue to get that again this year. There are restricted things of how we can spend those dollars, and so the request would be for you to consider is to remove, remove the $45,000 request from the assessor's office and utilize, run that through our riparian aid committee for potential use there.
I have a question really quick on the riparian aid. I understand it's allocated, and we have an account that sort of builds for any issues. What is that amount at?
I couldn't tell you right now.
Okay, okay.
I'm not sure exactly what that is.
Okay. And the other, the reason I'm asking is, you know, I know we have a nominal increase requested from SWCD. I don't have it in front of me. Is it 3 to 4 something percent? Is there any work within the scope that they do that we could offset that request with the riparian aid?
That's certainly something that we could look into if the...
I mean, they do so much that I think it could qualify for, and I just have a hard time with, you know, I know the intent, why it was earmarked, and understanding that we've gone a little bit past now the buffer strip implementation and the issues coming out of that. That might be an opportunity to capture some, spend some more of those funds and keep it off the levy.
I agree.
We certainly take a look.
Yeah, if we get that number, that'd be good, because it seems to be building.
We can certainly look into that.
Okay.
The, as I mentioned, we're scheduled to meet with our ARPA, and one of the things that the commissioners from ARPA committee have discussed is looking at victim witness position. This position has been funded by ARPA in previous years, and next year that would be a $98,187 position that could be removed from, from the budget. Also, if you recall, at Public Health, when Kathy was here, the state of Minnesota is no longer paying for vaccines, and so she has $20,000 in her budget that she would, that could be covered by the ARPA funds, and then could be subsequently removed from her budget. The next item is, a new request is coming from Roden Bridge Highway Department, new maintenance worker. Again, within Justin's budget, he has multiple variable hour positions that are utilized for snow removal and also for mowing. As if you recall, during his board presentation on the budget, he had $400,000 that has gone to the city of Moorhead for the last 20 years for the 40th Avenue Turnback. During his budget request, or during his budget update, he requested that $400,000 be allowed to be kept in his budget to deal with seal coating and additional striping. The request for you to consider would be to utilize, look at utilizing $75,000 of that $400,000 for the new position, and when you remove the variable hours, if your board was to approve that, that would be a savings of $120,000 and $120. As Justin also reported, he is going to be having five retirements that are going to happen this fall. The board has already taken action on, on looking to replace those, but in reviewing, in reviewing those positions with Lori and Darren, we're going to see another savings of roughly $125,000. And so, these would all be requests for your consideration.
The balance for riparian aid at the end of 2023 was 802,493. And I believe we did utilize some of that for our new satellite images for this year, so that's, would be less that amount then.
You know, I would maybe kind of lean on Commissioner Kravenoff a little bit here. Just knowing the work that the SWCD is doing within the realm of the intent of those funds, I really do feel like we could offset some of that, and I just, in a time when we're lobbying the legislature for some big needs, you know, I have a hard time if we're not utilizing frequently those funds that are being, have been allocated, especially now that all of the buffer strips have been implemented.
And to the point, if I may add, you know, I do feel... And to the point, if I may add, you know, I do feel specifically for the ask on what we're talking on the aerial pictometry, there we go, I think that aligns itself for those uses.
I agree as well, yeah.
Yeah. I had no idea that number was that high. I knew it was high, but...
Well, it's been a while.
Double, huh?
It's been several years.
It has.
It's been several years since that.
And can I ask, being newer, so was there over the last, let's see, that started, what, eight years ago or six years ago?
It was the Dayton administration, so I'd say...
Yeah, about eight. So my point was, there discussions earlier on from commission uses for those funds at all?
We did have discussions, I mean, we have a buffer strip committee, and we did have discussions on, you know, how we could utilize those funds. I think that, you know, maybe I'll lean on the attorney a little bit. I mean, part of those were understanding that there could be some litigation that some of those funds would need to go pay for if we had landowners that weren't wanting to comply, understanding it wasn't our regulation, it was from the state. So I think that's initially why some of that was that way, but we had talked between the assessor's office and lands, the planning and zoning office, if that could be utilized in some way, but nothing definitive.
Lori, the riparian aid, is that considered a restricted fund with the state auditor's office?
Yes.
So we don't, that's not considered when we talk about what we have for available reserve fund balances? So it's kind of outside all by itself, sitting out there somewhere.
It's part of the general fund, but it's a restricted fund balance.
And this would make the criteria for riparian aid?
The pictometry one, for sure.
Yeah.
But that $800,000 is nothing that anything to do with the $14 million that we show on the general fund balance?
No.
Okay.
Lori, do you see a downside to using this aid for that purpose?
Not at this point, I don't.
I think it would be helpful to find out what the boundaries are of that fund, just to get a feel for that.
Sure.
Because it just seems like a big enough amount, we should be like, you know, if we have some lateral movement with it, you know?
The statute basically says, and it was 2015, so we were close on that, it's been longer than I thought, but, that requires buffer land along those public waters and public drainage systems within the state, and the aid in the section is used to enforce and implement these requirements.
If I can, just to chime in here, so on that, on that, all that buffer stuff that we did, did we turn that over to the watershed?
They get a portion of it.
They get a portion of the riparian aid fund? They get a portion of it?
They get a portion, yes.
Okay, and that, I'm assuming that's then to handle the buffer stuff that they work on for the county? Okay.
Yeah, but our compliance, I mean, the Buffalo Red was lagging on their work, you know, their completion of it, but they pretty well are catching up on that, the part that the Soil and Water had. I mean, it's like 99 point something complete. So again, it'd be just nice to see what latitude we have with this.
Yeah, I think, and I think that based on this board's request last year, we did spend time, some time with Matt Jacobson and also Soil and Water staff, just to look at some different ways, and we can certainly look at that again.
Does our other watershed district receive part of that too then?
They've chosen to allow the county to utilize, to address those issues, so we don't provide funds for them.
Any other questions?
All right, the final document that I had in your packet was the external agencies. Again, they're, in addition to our departments, there are agencies which this board has chosen to provide funding for, as a part of our ongoing levy. And so the requests, there are requests from 2025, it also shows based on what their 2024 request was. And so from a board standpoint, if there's any insight or direction that you would like to provide, Lori or I here, this is the information of our external agencies.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I didn't mean to derail the conversation on the other parts. I really am grateful for the work that you've put in to find additional ways to offset levy requests with the new requests. I, you know, I think it's, it looks really good, and I support that. I want to go back a little bit about all of the discussions that we've had throughout the last few months, and just, I know we've provided some feedback there. I'm just going to maybe pick on extension because while that's not necessarily maybe in this external request piece, there is a big agreement that was an addition, you know, and while I support that, just because I really have seen firsthand the amount of work that those positions do throughout the entire county, in a time when we spend a lot, a lot of money on mitigating difficult circumstances, I think that is an opportunity to provide great work throughout the county to prevent things like that, not only youth, but certainly in the natural resources realm as well. But, you know, we've tweaked a little bit the full-time equivalents for those positions over the years, and I believe now we've transferred through attrition. So is it 2.8 plus?
2.8.
Pardon?
2.8 positions.
2.8 plus the office support, correct?
Correct.
Right, so I think in the request, this year, it was maybe 2.85 with that office support. And I understand their reasoning, but knowing that the agreement is a large increase, I would maybe lean towards holding the full-time equivalent going into this next year, what it's been. Certainly open to board dialogue, so it would be continuing the 2.8 instead of the 2.85, that's a new request. Am I getting a consensus from?
Yeah, as part of those, yeah, as part of those discussions, I agree with you, Commissioner. I think that, you know, that's a new role, and let it, you know, let's give it a little time. I think for, even though Gilce is doing a wonderful work, you know, let's see how that develops. That'd be my opinion, too.
Mr.? Commissioner Campbell?
I would agree with that, and I just think back to this new three-year contract that's out there now also had a significant increase. I think it was to the tune of 20-some percent, if I'm not mistaken.
For year one, and then it was at 3 and 3?
Yeah, you know, so, you know, so I think that all by itself, there's, it's increased the investment that we have to make in that, and although we're only talking about a, you know, a really small fraction of a dollar amount there, I still think it's probably appropriate that we kind of absorb some of the high increase in cost of what we already have first, and then see what, how that develops moving forward. But I agree with both commissioners on their statements regarding that.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't be supportive.
And then I, I do have another one, if I might.
Sure.
Thank you. Over the last year, I've taken a deliberate initiative to be more active with the EDCs that we help fund with levy dollars, that being the Chamber, Greater Downtown Morehead Inc. with Derek LaPointe, and then the GF, Greater Fargo Morehead EDC. And I understand that, you know, individuals from this board are also on those boards too, but I really, one, I'm going to say I really struggle with the joint ask from the GF, EDC, and the Chamber. I appreciate that their work mirrors itself in certain ways. I appreciated their presentation. I do have a hard time with a 26% increase for the request this year, being I'm still not seeing generated work or discussions or initiatives on this side of the river. And I understand that we have challenges and opportunities with that, and understand that, you know, maybe you could do more with additional money, but when you look at a $250,000 request for an external agency, that is a huge amount of money, particularly when I look at, you know, the Minnesota Rural Counties Caucus that I, we meet monthly, if not every two weeks during session, and the amount of funds that are generated for Minnesota counties through that, we only pay $2,900 to that agency, and the lobbying that we get is unbelievable. So back to the other request, I really, I'm not sure that I personally can rally behind that huge of an increase this year. I think that Shannon Foal has done phenomenal work, the lobbying efforts, the visibility at the Capitol, the visibility at community events, having monthly dialogues with leaders on the Minnesota side is huge, and that just can be really commended. I'm not so sure that the other $85,000 that was last year, now bumping that up even makes sense. I can't justify, oh, we haven't seen any work with that piece, here's some more money.
I am on that board, the EDC, and I agree with you wholeheartedly. The Chamber has done a very good job at what we need, which is making St. Paul aware that we are out here and we're part of the second largest metro in the state, and she has done an impressive job. I had the opportunity to go up to the first Morehead day at the Capitol, and it was stunning. We had a large group of very articulate people who went from, Chamber, went from office to office and made our presence known and our needs identified. I agree with Commissioner Mojo that Shannon Foal has done a good job at representing our community in St. Paul. In fairness, the EDC, they have got a huge amount of money coming from Bismarck, and their business and their orientation is towards the development of businesses that are predominantly on the west side of our river. And as a result, we kind of get lost in the crowd. And to actually increase the funding, when I've not seen anything directed towards the Minnesota side, at least as far as the EDC goes, I think we've got places we need to direct our funds, and we have taxpayers to remember that that's no small amount to people that are paying. I've heard Commissioner Campbell's warnings that it's a regressive tax, and indeed it is. It's one that's necessary for us to function, but it's one that we need to be aware where we spend money, and that is a pretty large ask at a 26% increase. So I am inclined to agree with Commissioner Mojo on this. Anybody else have a, Commissioner Krabnikoff?
So in those discussions, you know, for those of you that are involved with the Chamber and/or the EDC, when they ask for that additional $65,000, do we have any idea where the emphasis of that money was pushing? I mean, they use the word joint, but did they, I mean, in any conversation, was there something where the Chamber was saying, you know, we value, you know, we feel we need this more value, and the EDC saying another piece? You know, was it 50/50? Do you follow what I'm saying?
But...
You're looking at what the distribution of this $65,000?
Exactly, and that's the part that's bugging me.
Well, they formed this alliance. I've heard nothing identified as these are additional services that will provide the Minnesota side. They are working in unison on a lot of projects, a lot of it is funding through the state of North Dakota, but they've revised the governance model that they're using in the EDC, and as such, there's a lot more money available from the state of North Dakota, and that, I think they see it as everybody's got to chip in more. Well, we're not getting it from St. Paul, and we do have specific needs that arguably are not being addressed on our side, that we get some good support from Chamber going to St. Paul with us. I think Derek LaPointe's done a good job. So that's where we're at. And frankly, and I'm speaking with all my constituents in the city of Morehead, but we've got communities within our county that are doing a pretty good job of trying to promote their own businesses, and we are not as supportive of them as we are of the EDC. And those are things we really need to consider. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I, having served on the Greater Fargo Morehead EDC board before, not on the executive committee as Commissioner Ebberg is now, and Commissioner Whalen was before him, I, you know, I recall, you know, and that board was a fairly large board with several Minnesota members on it, including the president of Concordia College, Morehead State, and then we also had several, you know, business people that are involved there. And I, you know, and I think back to some of those conversations that, you know, we were always reminding that there is this side of the river, and, you know, and that there needs to be some things done here. And I do, I do think that over the long, you know, the whole picture that goes on in terms of economic development, not always do you, are you going to be maybe the successful one in landing the business, but you have, you still have an opportunity to be able to have a home for some of those new employees that might work in those facilities. And I think over the years, Clay County has benefited from that. You know, alls you got to do is take a look over I-94 every morning and every evening, and you can see the number of cars going over, those people are going over there to work. And we can't, we can't lose sight of that. You know, but I guess my, Commissioner Krabnikoff, that's the question that I have too, is this $65,000 request, because they now put it in like a combined request, they still have separate budgets. The Chamber still has its own budget. And so how much, how much are we, how much is going to the Chamber and how much is going to the EDC? I think we fund for what we get out of it in terms of business development in Clay County. I think the $85,000 towards EDC is adequate.
Right.
You know, so, and I'm not suggesting that we remove that, because, just because there's always those other benefits that we get that I described, that I think has got a good value to it. But I, 26% right now is a lot. I know they've got some joint ambitions that are new, and it might be exciting for some, and as Commissioner Ebberg said, I think they're, they do get significant funding from the state of North Dakota, which I don't know if it's passed through Cass County or how that works, because Cass County is a big investor into that. But, yeah, I guess what it boils down to is, I'm not excited about adding the $65,000.
Well, you know, I agree that there are peripheral benefits. A lot of people that work in North Dakota live in Morehead. I don't know if what we're getting from the EDC is encouraging that, though. I think there's an encouragement for people to live in Fargo, and where we're spending our taxpayers' funds needs to be... And where we're spending our taxpayers' funds needs to benefit our taxpayers. And that's part of, of the concerns I've got. Again, Shannon Foal has done a great job working with us and I hope she continues to give us the support that we can take to the Capitol she has up to now. But I don't see a 26% increase being, being prudent. Anyone else?
We used to have, we used to also have another investor, um, into this process, not only Clay County, but the city of Moorhead. And where, where are they at when it comes to, uh, investing into the EDC? Are they, do they have any money going to the EDC anymore?
Yes, I can't remember the amount. And I don't know if they've had a request for an increase and I don't know what the response to that is. There may be some background we wanna, we wanna reach out and, and get from them just to give us some perspective on what we're, you know, what our, what our position is gonna be.
Last year, I think it was 25.
I think that's ringing in my head too, but I'm not certain of it.
25,000?
Yeah.
And then, and then lastly, I just want to, um, combine some of these things when you, when we come to this discussion, because it was, it was, uh, my, my motion and recommendation last year that we actually removed 25,000 from the EDC and move it over to the downtown Moorhead, Inc., because of the, uh, except the tremendous amount of effort that's being placed on our side of the river. And I see now that the, the request from them is, is to, that they get that again. The motion that I originally made was basically gonna be a one-time deal. However, I support the continuing effort. And I do think that that 25,000 that was taken should stay, uh, with downtown Moorhead, Inc. And I think it's probably gonna look that way where it's gonna be a very positive investment over the next several years as we start to see the things happening.
They're, they're truly engaged right now with the development. So, yeah. I concur with that as well. Other comments, thoughts on this?
What is, what is, uh, $65,000 taken out? What does that do to our net?
Well, Mr. Chair, if the board were, if the board were to, uh, take all the recommendations that were brought forward to you today, and Lori has got her, her magic laptop, uh, if, if you were to remove that plus the $65,000 request, uh, you'd be at 4.65% from a levy perspective.
I had an opportunity to, to meet with Lori and Steve last week on, on this. And we had some really good discussions and, and I think maybe from the recommendation standpoint, where we're at on a preliminary levy, it's something that I, I certainly, I certainly think it's a good starting point. And I, I don't think we're gonna be harmed by setting the preliminary levy at that. And I just want to go back to a minute just on that piece with the highway department. Uh, where Justin, um, had, had asked for that full $400,000 that was going towards a turnback project now to being used for roads and striping. The, the fact of the matter that he'd still have 325,000 left of that $400,000 is still a significant, significant increase to his ability to do what he couldn't do before, to the tune of having $325,000 more money every year. If, if that was, is the case that we want to continue to do that. So I, I still, you know, I, I don't think we should look at that as a net bad thing with what we're doing and, and using that 75,000 for his, and it's still going to his department for a new request. So, um, so I, I think that still makes a lot of sense. Uh, I, being on the ARPA committee, I'm gonna certainly support the recommendations there. And I know, uh, the victim witness thing, uh, that's, Brian also serves on the ARPA group. And I think that's really a significant one that it makes sense to, um, be able to use those funds towards that. And the same with the, the 20,000 from public health. But, um, so I, I, you know, I, after sitting down with you two, I, I too wanted to thank you for your, your work on that. I, I personally don't think we're done yet. When I, when I look at, circle these numbers, I still think that we have the ability to, to soften the blow a little bit more. And, uh, but we can have that dialogue between now and December. But I, everything that you've proposed here, uh, on, on bringing this down, I am in complete support of. One, one of the things that we also have to remember though, in addition to these things, is what was just requested of Solid Waste Day. That's another $5 that goes directly onto the property tax statement. That $3 in tipping fee, that's gonna go on to everybody's, uh, uh, monthly garbage bill. You know, so those are things that fall outside of our levy, but they're still things that are impacted by the people who have to pay for it. And we still haven't, uh, we're still not done with the HRA yet, so. Okay, I'm done.
Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Um, the, the one piece that I'm having a little bit, and I understand that it's nominal. But the Historical Society is asking for a 3% uh, this year. And I know Commissioner Kravonoff, you're on that. I struggle not having the full budget and, you know, I, we've heard it. It's, it's not ready till December. But, you know, that agency is, has the ability to recoup fund their revenues. And, you know, I just struggle a little bit with that amount, knowing that it was commented that they've done. They did fantastic with, um, visits. Would maybe appreciate having more of an in-depth, um, budget line item so we could see proposed and actuals. I don't know if that's possible as we move forward, but.
I think, yeah, I think we can get something. I, I can say that, um, as I follow the budget, I mean, their cash flows are good. There, there is no question about that. One thing I think they've done, you know, they did a wage study also. Same thing, five and a half percent, you know, that number seems to be pretty common. And, and so they're making their adjustments within. Uh, they had a retirement of a, you know, Mike Peel. And, you know, would, would have been a, a high salary, you know, for being there 30 some years. And, and now you have, so they're internally making those adjustments. And, uh, so I don't, I don't think they're, I don't, I don't, what I view, we can get numbers. I don't think they're building on their account at all. I think they're just kinda managing. And with that, there is a good cash flow for that operation. I think that, you know, they have a vision too. And their vision is this is tourism, this brings money in the Moorhead, this brings money in New York County. And what can we do to be the museum that can, you know, have some ability to have some, uh, focal point from people throughout the state and the region?
And I appreciate that. I, I, I hope no one up here feels like I'm pinpointing their specific committees. I just know we haven't had the opportunity really to discuss as a whole through that. So I, I'd appreciate that. And then my, my final piece, Mr. Chair, um, and then I'll be quiet is, um, as Clay County continues to grow, um, and we're tackling really complex issues as, as reiterated here. Um, and just looking at our legislative efforts, um, within the county, uh, county staff, the ability to maybe seek congressional delegated funding, which I know we've not had the opportunity, um, to do. We're, you know, we're really tack, tackling some big issues. And I, I really, um, I know Steve hasn't brought this forward, uh, being cognizant of where the budget is. And, you know, I've, I've brought this forward to Commissioner Campbell just to talk a little bit about, you know, I, Clay County currently has a halftime assistant county administrator. And I know that we don't have a request for this, but it's as we look forward to what that would be. I really think that Clay County needs to think really seriously about adding that as a full-time position. Uh, we're, we're growing as we alluded to in the discussion earlier. And I appreciate that, you know, our administrator didn't bring this forward just because I know he's cognizant of what the, the fiscal strain is on all of these requests. But at, at some point, we have to take that step. And, and maybe it's January 1st, uh, you know, we do have a pick committee that can work these things through. Uh, we do have some maybe, um, savings in, in areas with the external agencies. But certainly, um, if there's any additional revenues, I'm not seeing cannabis revenues here. Not that we want to pay for that 100% with that. But, um, to have crucial support, um, with the team that we've built to manage the day-to-day operations, streamlining processes, um, and ensuring that our key projects are administrated effectively, I really do think we'll see the savings. You know, I just can think back of the legislative session and Steve spends two days at the Capitol and, and Darren's working things through here. But there still is a large amount of issues that are going on. And I'm not sure that we're funding that area as well as we could. And so it's, it's nothing against Steve or Darren's work at all. But you can't look at how much everything is growing without acknowledging that.
I can weigh in on that. First of all, Commissioner Mojo, no problem with you talking. These are things we need to talk about. And, you know, even, and we try and avoid work sessions and adding to everybody's busy calendar. But these are, this is a very important thing to discuss. And I appreciate not just the insight, but the fact you bring things up that we need to talk about as a group. One of the advantages, and there are plenty of disadvantages that I have, having worked as a staff person for 40 years in local government, is that I've seen it done in very different circumstances, different eight, different sized communities, the different focuses. But I have never seen an administrative organization in the places I worked that run as, runs as lean as we do here. Now, that's a good thing. We, we don't have a bunch of people that are sitting around with idle time. But it's also, there's just so much you can expect out of the team you've got if you don't have a, a backup. And that half-time in our administrative team, I think, is warranted. And it's worth discussing and it's worth looking at. And we've talked about this for at least two years where, you know, maybe we'll look at it next year and think about it. Maybe we, maybe it's time to look at it now and think about it. And see what, what a cost or what a, a reorganization structure would look like to basically give our county administrator, who's doing a very good job, the support that he needs where he needs it. And that has to come from Steve and his, his staff. I mean, that's not something we decide. That's something Steve, you provide us with the information. And I'm soliciting that. I think Commissioner Mojo is soliciting that. It's just information, but we, I think we need to hear it. You, you're doing a good job, but this is the fourth fastest-growing county in the state. And we're gonna keep growing. And not only hiring somebody now or getting somebody in position makes sense. Five years from now, having somebody with five years' experience in administration, when maybe we look at a real surge coming in will be invaluable. When you need it, is not the time to decide that you're gonna staff it. You staff it in anticipation of those needs. So I agree with Commissioner Mojo. That's something we really need to look at and consider.
Well, and, and, and part of the reason that I bring this forward is we've not had the opportunity to discuss this as a full board. Uh, I've taken some of the feedback that I heard during reviews over the last six months. But certainly, uh, if you look at our committee assignments as a whole, they've certainly grown. And, um, and we work with our administrator to do that. I, I would probably lean heavier on Commissioner Campbell to this discussion, probably because, you were here with the implementation of the assistant administrator when, I, I believe the administrator was Vijay, when Vijay was here, and that's when it was added. And, you know, and I'm not quite sure the year that that was, but certainly you can attest to the need.
Yeah, I, um, first off, I, you know, I, I, I think we've got the best administration in the state of Minnesota in terms of our county administrator and his group. And I don't think we've gone backwards one bit in, in what we do and what, you know, and that's a testament to, to, um, both Steve and Darren and everybody that, that he looks to for, advice and potential recommendations. I, I certainly think this is, is worthy discussion. I don't think it's, uh, quite frankly, I don't think it's anything that we need to put a, a dollar placement in the budget for right now. I think, you know, I think we're, at this point in time, we're trying to bring down. That doesn't, that does not mean that we still should not get the feedback. I, I think you both make a good point. You know, we're recognizing it and we're seeing the potential of our, of the growth in demands. I, to this date, Steve hasn't called me on the phone and said, hey, I need somebody. I need, I need help. You haven't done that to me. Uh, and, you know, but, but I do think that you should be, you know, talking with us about that. And, and maybe, you know, maybe a good place to start is, is pick. And I, and it goes to some of the other issues. And Commissioner Mojo mentioned legislative issues. You know, it wasn't too long ago, we, and I don't think we have anything on our budget right now for 2025, but we had talked about, um, um, implementing some, a lobbyist, you know, is, um, uh, you know, I, I think there's, there can, there's something to be said by some who say, don't send us lobbyists. Send us your own people, uh, to tell us what your needs are. You know, so from that standpoint, you know, that might, that might be a way too to maybe move some funds from one place where we're considering putting money to, to something like that. And again, I, I think it's a good idea. I think the dialogue should continue. I think we started off, I think when we started off, um, it was Darren's position was 20% admin, or assistant in 80, right? Isn't it? Darren?
That sounds about right, yes.
Yeah, you know, so, so we've, you know, that's kind of moved up and I, 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 yeah, anyway, I, I think it's, I think it's worthy to talk about. And I, I don't think we should, um, avoid it. I'm not saying that we shouldn't implement it in 2025. But if we do, and, and we've already set a levy, uh, you know, just based on numbers I see, we can find the money to do it for that year. Alls you gotta do is look at revenues over expenditures.
Thank you. And I just, to follow up, I, I really value all of your perspective on this. And so I, I think that we have a system to where we have a pick committee that can start pulling the numbers on what would that, that cost. You know, because it's intertwined with the HR department, I think there's some ways you could work. While, while I don't think Steve has ever come and said, I need help. You know, I, there's been years where he comes to us and can't, at the end of the year, has not been able to take his vacation. And understanding, um, people with dynamic responsibilities and families, sometimes it's, it's more work to actually take your vacation than take your vacation. And so I think from that, I, you know, I, I think that is one aspect of why I think we need to add additional support to that department.
I would agree. And, and, you know, four years of having worked with Steve, I would, I would be scared to death if he came in and said he needed help because I think it would be way past the point to where he needed help. And that's not a criticism, Steve. It's a recognition. We, uh, we do have, from what I've seen, the best administrative group of any county. When you go to these AMC conferences, it shows. Even the counties that are way over budgeted in, in certain areas and it reflects in their levy. And, uh, and yet, you know, we function well and effectively. And that's a testament, not just to you, but to your two predecessors. Since I've been here, the county has always had excellent administrators. And Lori has always done a great and a very critical job for us. So we're fortunate, but you don't run somebody to death. Best, best running back in, in the NFL doesn't take every snap. There's gotta be a backup. So this is something I hope we'll look at and pick is a good place to start. Oh, Commissioner Kravonoff?
I, I support everything you're saying. Uh, can I jump to another subject or? Okay. So, uh, question on the revenue side. Do we have a rough idea what, uh, how the? Do we have a rough idea what, how the cannabis tax will come in, or when it comes in, or is there any, just asking, projections that the state throws out that kind of says what an expectation may look like?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kravonoff, at this point, we've seen nothing from the state as far as what we can expect. So I don't know if at AMC, the policy conference, if we'll hear any information at that.
Yeah, because it is, you know, I don't know that it's going to be huge, but it, you know, it'll be interesting what it amounts to, because it comes to us, right?
It's a really good point, Commissioner Kravonoff, but we also got to remember that in 2026, I think there's a whole new boatload of taxes that are going to be coming forward that we're going to be required to pay, too.
Yeah.
In terms of, you know, the cost for the per- per-employee family leave and all of those things that are going to be implemented in 2026. So hopefully that tax will be a bag on that revenue side.
And not to be too jaded, but if it comes from St. Paul, you're going to get the bone. There may not be much meat left on the bones. I think the state's going to be pretty heavy-handed in taking their share of what they think running this, and they have a pretty large state bureaucracy they're developing to oversee this, and those folks got to be paid. So I'm not seeing this as much of a windfall. I hope it just, what it costs us, I hope is paid for. Any other input, or Steve, what else you got for us?
No, I think, I appreciate it. Just wanted to maybe kind of bring it all together. If the recommendations that were brought forward, we'll address the ARPA next week. The feedback I got from the board is to, to keep the EDC in chamber at $100,000 for the chamber, $85,000 for the EDC, keep the positions for extension at 2.8 rather than 2.85, and then the board would be, would be fine at this point with utilizing, or would support utilizing 1.835 million for, for to offset the levy from fund balance. And then we will reach out to the soil and water and look at if there's any repairian funds that can be utilized to offset soil and water, and then also, does the board want us to reach out to Marine in regards to the historical society, historical and cultural society?
Well, it probably should come from you, maybe if they, I mean, they have to have an audited results, too, but even their proposed for actual, I'm never exactly seeing their proposed in actual.
One of the things that most of those external agencies will do is they'll, they'll provide us with a budget, and then if, and sometimes if they're funding a portion of a current year's budget with fund balances, we have an idea what those fund balances are that they have. And we talk about it with our own budget, why shouldn't, you know, external agencies should be providing that same thing to us, so I do agree with Commissioner Mojo on that.
Okay.
I did have one last question for Lori. When we met, I had asked the, if you were able to calculate the revenue on the 50% cost share on federal stuff for, that we have for, because that's something you had said was not included in the revenue. So when we raise all of our wages, that should also mean that we have increased, you know, and those that qualify, 50% of that comes from the federal government, but, so we put the entire cost of that in our budget, but not the revenue offsetting from top. So if we could do that, incorporate that, too?
I have not done that yet.
Yeah, and I knew that, I think we what meant, we talked last Thursday or something, and it's sweet, isn't it? But I still think that that's something that could also then, because we know it's got to be something. So whatever that is, add that in, too, on the revenue side, that basically, that'll bring that net down a little bit.
I'll work with Quinn to determine.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Anything else? All right.
Thank you for your feedback. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And let's see, you've got one more.
Yes. Last item I have this morning is a request approval to enter into pre-design contract with Klein-McCarthy Architects. This, this board has identified addressing mental health as one of its priorities within our county. Previously, this board took action on seeking funds for psychiatric residential treatment facility for youth. We had entered into an agreement to look at a pre-designed contract for services for that facility. Having said that, as we started that process and we looked at the needs of that facility, one of the things that Commissioner Campbell pointed out was is we, we have a facility just like that already. It's called our non-secur detention facility located across the street. And I think that one of the things that has been talked about previously is we utilized that space because it was, it was convenient, but for some of our youth, that maybe isn't the best place to go, especially those that have done nothing to necessarily be there. And so one of the ideas that was brought forward was to utilize the PRTF or use the non-secur detention space as the PRTF, and then look at funding for, for the non-secur detention in a different location. We've had the opportunity to talk about that as a, as a building committee. The, that committee wasn't supportive of that. We also had the opportunity to talk through our legislative committee with Representative Kup, or excuse me, Representative Keeler and Senator Kupac in regards to that, and felt that that was something that they could, they could support through legislative requests also. And so the request before you this morning from Klein-McCarthy is a lump sum contract not to exceed $155,050. If you recall, earlier, our earlier project was $109,000 with the reimbursables. We spent about 20, roughly a little over $21,000 of that on that study. Having said that, Klein-McCarthy has indicated that because of the work that we did there, some of that work will transfer into, into this discussion. This contract has pre-designed services for both the expansion or the design of a new facility, but also any potential redesign of the existing facility that the Department of Human Services and MDH would have for that. It's important to realize that as a, as a hourly not to exceed, the cost of the two studies for the redesign or for the pre-design and the remodel would be roughly about $85,000. As we've talked about through our other projects, B3 requirements do come with legislative funding, and so there would be up to an additional $75,000 of fees for B3, depending on the square footage of that facility. And with that, I'd yield for any questions.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. I, you know, I think, I think it's really important that we go through this, this phase. I, I think the focus is going to be on, on a, the design of a new non-secure slash transitional housing facility, and then, and then a, what would be a remodel, if anything, on, for the PRTF. And the nice thing about that is, is all of these funds, you know, if it is approved and we get it, they're included in what we, we can ask for through the financing from the state. I just, my only concern is with the language in the motion to adopt that's in here, and it, it almost gives the impression that we're building two new buildings. Because it says a contract for a non-secure facility and a psychiatric residential treatment facility. It's, you know, I think what, you know, just from a public standpoint, we're not trying to build two new buildings. And the way, the way this reads, it could read that we're building two new buildings. So, but I, you know, I fully support us moving forward with, with this contract with Klein-McCarthy. And I think through our building committee, we also suggested that that should move forward.
Any other comments? Commissioner Campbell, do you have a, an alteration to the motion that was presented that you'd like to move?
Well, I, yeah, I would, I would move that we approve entering into a pre-designed contract with Klein-McCarthy Architects for a non-secure juvenile facility and for the redesign of our current non-secure unit to the needs required for a PRTF.
Do we have a second?
Sounds good, I'll second that.
Discussion.
And I, you know, and I guess I do know that, from the language and how we do it and what we do for the state, I, you know, I think the key thing there is that, is that we're, in this process that we would be doing, we are taking what is already ours and using it for what is a statewide need. You know, so, so from that standpoint, and there's, I believe we still have a, what, a $2 million balance on the bond in that building, so all of these things have to be financially put together in an appropriate package, and, and it needs to be supported first and foremost, if we're going to get anywhere, by our local legislatures, and it's my understanding that they're on board and in the know on how that all works. But the only thing that would concern me is if the, the motion that I have put forward is adequate for the needs of our legislatures. I'm assuming it would be, because this is just really about the hiring the architect for design.
I would, I would think, Commissioner Campbell, Mr. Chair, that this would be appropriate based on the discussions that we had.
Thank you.
This is a necessary expanse. It's kind of like you can't go fishing without buying tackle, and this is the tackle we need to go try and land this, this funding, so. And as Commissioner Campbell indicated, the building committee was, was comfortable with this. Any other discussion? We've got a motion, a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break. Okay, back in session, and we're in committee reports. And I believe, I'll check my notes. I believe we're going to start with Commissioner Campbell.
All right, on the 20, the 27th in that afternoon, we did have a, we had a solid waste budget meeting, where we went over with Corey the things that he presented today and the changes that, that he made, and they're basically those, the $5 increase on the tax and then the $3 tipping fee is what will be needed just to cover the current expenses. Then on the 28th, we had a Prairie Lake Solid Waste meeting, and at that meeting, Senator Kupic was, was there, and he toured the plant, and then he was able to come in for the first 15 minutes or so of our meeting. And, you know, I think in the past, he had shown some, some sort of concern, I think it was mostly towards that, the waste energy facility in Minneapolis and the location that it was at, and I think he had some strong concerns there on that. But, but by and large, he's been very supportive of our facility. As a matter of fact, when there was legislation out there that maybe could have hampered the ability for the waste energy facilities to continue, he stood, he spoke up and said, you know, that our facility was doing it the appropriate way. We were able to talk to him a little bit about the ASH utilization, and I just kind of wanted him to be aware that in the future, that might be an alternative product that can be used in MINDOT projects as well, that so it could be used just, not so much just for county projects, but if MINDOT has some projects in the area that could use that, it would be beneficial. Of course, we asked about the SCORE funding, and I also, we also talked to him about how these facilities could potentially be a positive for all the discussion about PFOS and how you get rid of it. And, and in our facility in Purim, our facility heats to 1,900 degrees, and PFOS are 95% to 98% destroyed at 1,700 degrees. So this could be another way that could, you know, could actually be a good reason why we have these facilities, to get rid of that contaminant. We did receive our ASH permit from MPCA for, and I believe that, I don't know if it's a three-year permit or whatever. And then there will be some stack testing done for PFOS, done December 2nd. And when we talk about how it destroys it, we still want to know what emissions might be coming out, and that we're, we're going to be within those safe standards, which I am confident we will, based on other places that have done the same thing. That same day, I came back then, we had the building committee meeting, and we had some significant discussion about the needs of social services as well as public health, and then with James with the second floor, the fourth floor. There's going to be 3,200 square feet that's going to be available for, could be available for social service needs, and in the second floor, another 1,400 feet that could be available for public health. And this is outside of the area that James is currently using, which is 5,000 square feet. And again, if you recall, our overall conversation and plan with the merger of non-secure and the PRTF, that it could also free up that 5,000 square feet in the Family Service Center, which would really put us in a good position long-term. And I know Brian Milton had talked about, is it probation, Steve, that has really been wanting to get back over closer to the campus, so there might be some opportunities there down the road. We did hear from Joe regarding the building that we have over here, and it's, I think, based on the costs involved, we had talked about renting that, that house. That's kind of out of the question now, so we'll be just keeping that up in terms of view from the public. We talked about the garage doors at the Resource Recovery Facility and their, you know, the need that we have to get those in place before winter sets in, and of course, there's going to be some legal issues that are going to be ongoing, and Attorney Milton's been involved with that discussion. There was also some long-term discussion about the front entrance of the exterior of the Family Service Center, what could be done with the canopy and the way that all looks at this point in time. I don't know that there was any direction really given to make changes at this point. And, you know, then we did, we had the timeline of things that come over the next year to all the way up through 2030, so. Good discussions that were had there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Kravenoff?
Thank you. I just had one meeting that was on Wednesday, the 28th. We had our monthly meeting for the Historical and Cultural Society. And just a couple of quick comments about that. We had one of, Gabby, who was in, in charge of our communications for the, for the society, has left her position. Got a really good job with the University of Minnesota down in the cities. And so we're in the process of replacing a big job that she did. And it looks like we have some good applicants in mind. Also, just a, kind of, it's been an ongoing conversation now for a couple of months. We, we know that our executive director, Marine, is going to be leaving us in July of 2025. So we've been doing salary surveys along with, excuse me, a full board, excuse me, employee positioning and the work that they do. We had a retreat. And this is how things may look for what ahead for a new executive director and putting that person in a good place to succeed and carry on the good work that the society has done for a number of years. We also had a, as board education, we had a, a discussion about the traveling exhibits that we do. And I'll just make a couple of quick, quick comments. So each year, we have about a $25,000 budget over there for the traveling exhibits. There are normally three a year. And, and not only there are three a year, in order to get these exhibits, some of them are three years, ordered three years in advance. So it takes quite a bit to get these things to come to our facility. So anyway, we did a deeper dive into that and it was very interesting. So anyway, otherwise budgets in good shape and we, we look forward to our fall activities at Pangaea coming up, the big event that will hold at the EM comps in November 16th. And also a, in October, have a fundraiser for the Historical Society called the Hustle 5K. So put on your running shorts and come out on Saturday, October 12th. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. I, last week, on last Tuesday, I attended the Solid Waste Budget Committee Discussion. As Commissioner Campbell alluded to, I also attended the Prairie Lakes Committee Meeting. Really thankful that Senator Kupac had the opportunity to get out there and tour the facility. If you're not familiar with what happens out there, it's really helpful to observe. Really great opportunity to reduce so much out of the waste stream and have a dialogue with a lot of different county entities who see the importance in such a joint facility. Then I also had a discussion with Steve on the budget proposals that we discussed today. And then wanted to update the board. I've been appointed to a subcommittee on taxes and state assessed properties. It's the subcommittee that the Association of Minnesota Counties has through Matt Hilgert to discuss a lot of what's going on in the realm of that statewide. And really grateful for the opportunity to provide Clay County's perspective on that. Certainly, there's a lot of different, unique circumstances regarding the dialogue that we'll have there and hopeful that some of those discussions will weigh favorably for Clay County. I know that in the past, when I served on the Tax Forfeiture Committee, it required a board support. So just wondering if this board sees support and value in that.
I would move that you be granted per diem on that. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. And then that concludes my report.
Okay. I, and we had one meeting and that was covered by Commissioner Campbell, the building committee meeting. He was very thorough in that. I do, however, I've also AMC's request that I serve on a, on a grant review for the Safe Courts Program. And that is probably going to involve, well, there's 24 packets, so it's going to involve a lot of time at the desk, but we also have about six meetings scheduled. And that'll be representing AMC as part of the Public Safety Board. And I would like to see if I could get a, or a commission vote on that as well.
Mr. Chair, I'll add that to your committee portfolio with per diem.
Just a second.
Okay. Have a motion, a second. I'll abstain, but all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay, thank you. That completes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Participated in the solid waste budget discussion that was addressed by Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Mojo. Also participated in the building committee, which has been addressed. On the 29th, I met with Troy and Kathy in regards to food contract at the new location. Talked about the door updates and key issues they're, they're having. And then also what their training schedule looks like as we, as we approach the opening of the facility. Just a, just a follow-up. I did have the opportunity to, to talk with Commissioner Gross on Friday. He threatened to be here this morning, but he's hoping to return soon. But having said that, last week, we did, we talked, I brought forward the lands committee update, our lands committee. I think there was, in talking with Mr. Chair, I think there was a little bit of confusion on what committee I was getting across. And so just wanted to bring that forward again. Again, there's a potential that Commissioner Gross will be back by the time that meeting starts. But in, in the case, we're not, we're just looking to have a discussion with the motion of who, who we would like to have on that committee with, with per diem.
Commissioner Mojo, you're on that committee? But there's two members, so we need a second one? I was mistaken on which committee that was. I thought it was one I was covering for Commissioner Gross. But is that something, Commissioner Kravenoff, would you be interested in that maybe?
That, sorry, I don't have my calendar pulled up. Did you say the date? It's in the next two weeks. It's, that committee, we, we cover a lot in regards to the county-owned properties, the Crestwood Pollinator Site. We went through that, the Hayland leases, gravel pit stuff. Did you see it? Thank you.
Say it again.
The same day as the ordinance meeting?
I think Matt was looking to have it right after board next week.
Oh. Yeah, that'd be fun.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to add Commissioner Kravenoff as Commissioner Gross's alternate for that with per diem.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay.
And then would just note, I appreciate the comments and discussion in regards to full-time administrator today.
Assistant administrator.
Assistant administrator today. That I wouldn't appreciate. But I do, I do, I do, as was pointed out, we are fortunate to have a very many, great number of talented people here that makes everything run smoothly. As an example of that, the question that, that you guys had in regards to the statute in regards to cannabis, the 80% will go to the general fund of anything, anything generated through the tax portion, and 20% will come to local government. So Matt was, Matt was watching us and forwarding. That concludes my report.
Thank you. You have anything? Nope. Sarah? Well, a little early, but I suppose we're adjourned.